Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you call, I'm sorry, and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and the first item on our agenda then this evening is information from individuals and delegations. This is an opportunity for people who wish to address the board. I would ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and Ms. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining, and then a red card when your time has expired. And I would ask at that time that you please conclude your comments. I would also ask that you keep your comments respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our students, and we are not here to criticize job performance or specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are private and confidential and must be handled through proper channels, not in this public forum. So finally, we provide this as an opportunity for public comments. It's not really a back and forth, but at this point, I would invite anyone to come forward who wishes to address the board and state your name and address. I know we had a couple of people signed up, so Charlie, if you want to come on up, that's great. And yep, up to that microphone, and then I would ask that you make sure that the little green light is on. Is it on?
Yes, it is.
Good to go. Okay, good evening.
Thank you for letting me speak, and I'd like to let you know, all know of an upcoming event and ask for your endorsement and support and helping us with the public to know what's going on. I'm a proud East High alumni who played football on the 1970 state championship team, and I got many friends and acquaintances who played on many great West Waterloo football teams. And we always have that debate on which is the best team. You know, we, this, I think my team is, they think that, and we can go on, and that debate can go on and on and argue that forever. But there is no debate on what was the biggest, greatest football game in the history of Waterloo that was played November 7th, 1970, at Sloan Wallace Stadium. And here's why. At that time, East and West were in the Big Eight Conference, and at the end of the year, they both played each other. It was an annual thing that they continued until they went to the Mississippi Valley Conference. East was undefeated, 8-0, and West was undefeated, 8-0. And it was the first time in the history that they ever played the last game of the season, both undefeated. KWWL, for the first time ever, and had never have since, televised it. There was 9,000 to 10,000 fans who showed up. Tickets were sold out. They went on sale at East High School and sold their allotment out within 30 minutes, and West High sold their allotment out within 10 minutes. I know at the time, the school board at that time, there was consideration in moving it over to O.R. Latham Stadium to handle the crowd, but luckily you weren't around, but they debated it for four days and up till 12:30 in the morning before they decided to keep it here. Another point is that Columbus and Cedar Falls are supposed to play that Friday. They moved that game to Thursday so their fans could watch it or attend the game. And it was a known fact that the state championship trophy was going to stay in Waterloo, whether it was at East or whether it goes over the West. November 3rd will be the 50th. We're having a 50-year reunion for all players, fans, and many people connected to that game at the American Legion Post, which incidentally is named after two World War Waterloo high school graduates who died overseas. Fred Becker, an East graduate, and Carl Chapman, a West graduate, at the Legion Post 138. How's my time? I'm talking fast. Okay. Various speakers will recall their experiences from that game, including several coaches who was coaching at East and West at that game, a representative from Cedar Falls, who their record was 7-2 at that time, only losing to East and West, and head coach Bob Kleiman, who is still around, who's the head coach for Columbus, would give their perspectives of the game. We have Robert Greenlee, who is a police resource officer, will give us his perspective of what it was like with extra police presence at Sloan Wallace Stadium when you have 10,000 people there. The media coverage, Kevin Evans of the Courier will be there, and it not only captured it as far as Waterloo, but statewide. The high school bands is the first time in the history that both bands played at, I'm done? At this time. So all I'm just asking is that it coincides with the closing of Sloan Wallace, and I know that we would hope you would endorse it. I don't know if you can get it on YouTube, but we have many players out of state that would like to see this, and we just want to make you aware of it. And I'm taking 10 extra seconds to say thank you, Dr. Lindeman, for all you did, and good luck in your future. Thank you.
Could you state the date and time again?
November 3rd.
November 3rd, and Kingsley, I got an extra sheet.
We'll get that information, and we'll get it, we'll get it to our reporter, and we'll get it out in a press release. We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. And if you have, he, he's got the exhibits right there. Yep. Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening that wishes to address the board?
Good evening. Happy Monday.
Good evening.
I'm Jody Baller, and I am the president of the WEA, and I just wanted to give just a short update as far as how we are working with the district. So right now, we have approximately 500 members in our organization. Currently, we have been interviewing school board candidates. We don't endorse any candidates, however, we will give our members just kind of a rundown of the, of what they stand for, what they are, what they talk to us about with some of the questionnaires, and that will be posted on our website. I will be sending out monthly, like, kind of updates to you, as it was suggested to me, which I think is a great idea, with the website and things like that, so you can go on and kind of see what we are doing as well, as well as some of our committee names. And so if you need to reach out to anybody with, like, our rights or anything like that, that you're welcome to. I was invited to be part of the TLC Evaluation Committee, so I'm excited about that. That's get started tomorrow night. I met with Angelie, and we looked at some of the teachers on the committee, and I feel like it's a really good representation of our teachers, both union and non-union, to kind of give some voice to that process. We are working with the district. We continue to work with staff climate surveys and principal building plans, just to ensure that we're moving forward and growing our teachers and our students. The other thing that I'm excited about is partnering with the District and Midwest Studies Group to send a survey out to our teachers for, that have been with us for four to 10 years, and get some feedback on that. I think that'll be really good information for both the district and the unions, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? All right. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda this evening, which consists of four items: the minutes of the October 11th, 2021, regular board meeting, and the October 13th, 2021, special board meeting, item A; the personnel appointments and adjustments, which are item B; the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings, which is item C; and the delegate assembly representative, which is item D. I would entertain a motion to place those items on the table.
So move.
Thank you, India. And a second, Stacy. And then are there any items that board members wish to have removed?
Item D, Delta, please.
Item D. Okay. So then, all those in favor of approving items A, B, and C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Exhibit D, and the recommended motion here is...
The Board of Education appoints Andy Johnson as the delegate to the IASB Delegate Assembly and Annual Meeting.
I'll move Sue second.
Second.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there goals set? Do you know what the agenda is going to be? Is it setting goals? Sometimes we, it seems like, prior, prior to that, we have considered some, but I don't recall seeing any this year. I'm just wondering what's going on.
They haven't sent, the priorities are in the, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but Pam's pulling it up.
I don't know yet, honestly.
Yep. But there will be sort of a platform that they work from.
I know Rhonda had did it in the past, and she really was nice for her, a lot of, she took some great stuff, takeaways from the meeting with other individuals and who are like-minded individuals, so I'm, I'm excited to see what will be gained from this, so definitely.
And we'll have some time on November 8th, if there is anything that, a priority that we need to set, to send with her, that we could always do.
Okay. That's what, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and I can share just a little bit more too, so, because I've been listening to IASB talk about this. So they will, they will send out their board's goals from the IASB, but then they will also look at what districts are adopting, and so, and what they have adopted in the past. So there have been, there have been like three, four, five priorities that have really been surfacing quite a bit over the past years, really, I mean, it's not just the year, but the last couple of years. And then the other thing they do is they cross-reference the IASB priorities with other educational organizations, like the School Administrators of Iowa, like the ISEA. There are several educational organizations that they will cross-reference, and so they will bring the delegates together from all of the different districts, and they will talk about, they'll ask them questions, what have you guys been doing? They'll look at the priorities, and then they'll, they'll just have conversations about how to rank order those. So that's kind of, it's, it's like, it's like us having a representative on the, at the table when they're discussing how they're going to go about the legislative session.
And as I recall, then some of that information is disseminated back through India to our board, and so you'll, you'll have a delegate packet that then you'll bring back to us that we'll have available, that the board can look at. Because I know Rhonda talked about, we had a couple of different work sessions about some of the things.
So on the website, it has, which I'll send a link out to the board members to what the, but it's the, the priorities proposed, priorities for 2022 are dropout prevention, or at-risk, mental health, teacher recruitment and licensure, school funding policy, and supplemental state aid. Those are the top five that they'll get into.
At the delegate assembly.
And I don't know if they're going to discuss public participation, but you know, that's been a hot issue at the national level the last few weeks, and I guess I would, I would propose we welcome public input.
Yep.
You know, the more, the better, and you know, it needs to be civil, but it doesn't need to, you know, it can be critical. We usually learn more, you know, there's always a nugget of information in there that I search for as a takeaway, and that we can maybe turn into a national item. So if there's any discussion on that, I guess I'm all for public participation, because in particular, because that's not a required...
No. Not every board does it.
Element, element of the meeting. Not every board does that, but I think it's, it's, it's really needed, and whatever, if there's discussion on that, I, I support.
Duly noted.
And we trust you to bring it, all, bring us back all the good info, so. All right. I know she will. She's awesome, so. All right. Then all those in favor of approving the delegate assembly representative, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Next item on our agenda is Exhibit E, and the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approved the contract with Zello at a cost of $110,620 for implementation from the January 1st, 2022 through June 30th of 2024. So thank you, Sue, and a second, India.
Yes.
And discussion. And I can turn this over to, I know, Dr. Lindeman, you're probably the best, Steph's not here, so you can, and Kingsley, and Michael, I'm sure there's plenty of people.
Sure, sure. I'll start us out, and then people can join in. So really, what we're asking you to, to vote on tonight is a contract with a career development software company named Zello. And it is legislated in, oh goodness, I'm gonna, now I don't have the number here, 2392, legislate, Husfile 2392, I think. It is legislated that districts would have certain career development processes that they do with students. There are certain requirements for eighth graders and ninth graders and so forth. So we do, you know, there, there's two things that we try to do. Not only do we need to meet the, the letter of the law, we have to meet the requirements of the legislation, but we also try to make sure that we're really meeting the spirit of what students need. And so we have had a contract with a different software company since the, the legislation came into play. And the cost to that was approximately, I believe, about $15,000 a year, I believe, 10,000, oh gosh, I'll have to look that up. So we have, and so we've, we've paid for that, and, and ever since the legislation came. But that was only a software that we just used for our eighth graders on, so eighth graders, ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders. So we've, as the public knows, and our parents, you know, hopefully know, we're really working on career development. There's lots of different pieces that we're, you know, we've, when we started the Waterloo Career Center, we were really trying to have conversations with students about, you know, what do you want to be, and trying to let them try out things that they may have some interest in, or maybe to weed out a few things. But the Career Center is not our be-all, end-all plan. It's a portion of our plan, where kids get to try out different careers, but that's not the only thing that students need in order to really kind of hone in on their, their careers, or to rule out things they might not want to do. So we, I, you know, sometimes I'll be talking to the public, and they'll say, well, I think you need to really back that up to eighth grade, and you really need to talk to the eighth graders. And then somebody will say, well, what about the seventh graders? Maybe you can do some things. And then somebody inevitably will say sixth graders and fifth graders, and we keep backing it up. So we are rolling out, have been working on this for about a year, on a K-12 career development program. The missing piece for me, really, as the leader, was really, how are we going to track the work for students? And so I actually originally worked with our technology department to maybe create a homegrown program, where they created a software that we could actually use, and lo and behold, one of them, in, in listening to me and doing all of these interviews, came back and said, you're not going to believe this, there is a company that does every single thing that you're asking us to do, and the name of it is Zello. And so it was a, what I really liked about it was, it would, it is a K-12 system, so students can start, they get their own portal, they get their own, so those of us who have kids in school, your kids will get their own portal next year. High school students will probably even get it already this spring, and so they will get their portal, and the portal is really their chance to really track a variety of things. They may take an interest inventory where they try out, you know, careers different, they'll take a, a interest inventory, and the results will be logged in there. So for your daughter, she's going to say, you know, this is what, this is what she liked, and here's some careers. And even as early as, you know, even the little kindergarten first graders will take a survey, and obviously, in that case, there, it's not going to be a real, you know, complex, there'd probably be a happy face, do you, you know, do you like to play with Legos, or do you like to bake? Do you like to, you know, talk with people, or do this? And so all of that will be archived in this system all the way through K-12. And so there are not very many districts that have adopted the elementary, the middle school, and the high school module, but it is imperative that we have all three systems. We will not actually be, this price includes all three systems for three years, so it's not just a one-year price, it is for three years. And so I, I think it's an amazing thing. Not only does it have the way to keep track of what our students are doing, and what they're trying, and what they're experiencing, but it actually has some software, some work-based learning, where some virtual programs where kids can, you know, they can walk into a little town, and they can try out some different jobs virtually, and it will, and they get to reflect on whether they liked it, they get to walk into a little hospital and do a couple of jobs there. And it's, it's in a, you know, there's a gaming format, especially at the youngest grades, so it's really...
I'm sorry, that's so funny, because that is like, that is like how they live.
They, it is how they live. They actually, there's six, you know, for those of us who live in that career development world, the, the schools are really charged with giving kids experiences within six service areas, which used to be the 16 career clusters, for those of us who are, are older. We may have heard the 16 career clusters, but now they actually have them clustered in six service areas. So they go into this little town, and there are some workers that are missing, and these students get to jump in and do some of the jobs, these little kindergartners, as soon as that, and they, they get to go in, and then they get to talk about their little reflection and do some little surveys, and all of that is archived. And then when they go on to first grade, it's sequential, they get to do some things, and then second grade, and then, so there's a K-2 module, there's a 3-5 module, a 6-8 module, and then a 9-12. And of course, as they get older, it gets much more complex. There's some scheduling components that they will start using as early as seventh grade, and it's not actually a scheduler, but it is a schedule planner. And so I couldn't, I couldn't be more excited, I couldn't be more excited about this. It is a little running joke that Kingsley says that when I start talking about it, I don't, I won't stop, and so he sometimes will like, he wants to explain it so that it doesn't go on quite so long. So I will stop right now, and I'll answer any questions you have, but I'm very excited. We have done, one more thing. We have done a ton of research behind this. Because I'm retiring, I, I did not want to make the decision, and so we've had approximately 80, 90 people involved in this, a lot of people, and we've done multiple demos. We've, every single counselor has seen it, every single administrator has seen it, and we've got these running field, feedback sheets, and it, it is just, you know, 95% positive. There's a few, Matt O'Brien and his technology department was there from the very beginning, and I really wanted them to really look at, you know, they're, of course, looking at it from a different lens, from the instructional side that I'm, I'm looking at, but they were really excited. As a matter of fact, a couple of things, they, they had a couple of things within the technology world that they thought were, could be better, and the company called them and said, what should it look like? We're gonna, we're gonna go back and look at that piece. So I think it's a match made in heaven. I'm pretty excited about it, so we're hoping that you will say yes.
And I'm excited about the idea. First of all, I would like the board to all get to demo it, because I want you all to see it, because it's really cool. But I love the idea that students would have this, something that they could literally track a portfolio from kindergarten through 12th grade and see, you know, it's not necessarily an individual plan, but it's, it's, it is an individual plan, just a little bit different, so.
And did I mention that the parents will get access to their kids' portals as well, so they can log in and look at how their kids are doing, and what their kids are thinking, and how that, I mean, if you, you know, for the public, I really would, I would describe it like this big funnel. We have the kindergartners that come to us, and they, they, you know, they, they want to be a doctor, a babysitter, maybe an NFL player, because sometimes, you know, or a fireman like their uncle, or, you know, whatever. So that, that's what a five-year-old will say. So we really want to take that and just kind of, over the course of their, their time with us, just kind of funnel it down. They don't need to know exactly what they want to do by the time they leave, leave us, but they should be closer to knowing what they do want to do, or what they don't want to do. Maybe they have it whittled down to, you know, two of the six service areas, or maybe they know, I want to be a pediatric oncologist, or whatever. Maybe they do know exactly. I knew I wanted to be in education from the time I was little, so for me, that funnel was really, you know, it was quick, and it was very precise at the end, but, you know, we just want kids, we want to be part of the process of having kids use their K-12 time to get farther in what they want to do, and certainly use their high school schedules to maybe, you know, take some college courses that will cut some time and cost off of their college time.
So this does not do, replace our scheduling system that we have, is right?
Great question. No, it does not. We will still schedule through Infinite Campus, but Zello interfaces with it, so students will play with the, the Zello scheduler, and you'll get to see, and they can move things around, and then it will interface, and it will download into the Infinite Campus system, so that's how we actually schedule courses, so.
Well, will the counselors still have to be the ones to go in, though, and, because...
Yep, they will, they will. And this year, we're, yes, and this, this, it will take us a few months to get this set up, so this year, we are not using Zello to do any scheduling or even the planning. This year, we've committed to really, this actually will launch, a soft launch this spring, and then a, a hard launch next fall, K-12.
Now, the security of this is excellent, okay?
Excellent, yes. Matt, it is Matt O'Brien approved.
Who else? Have any other UNs or anybody used it?
Yeah, a lot of districts are using the middle school and high school modules. Very, very few districts are using the elementary. There is just one district that I know of in Iowa, and I believe it's Pleasant Valley. But we have a little bit different plans for using how we're going to use it. There's even a section, when they go on a Life Lab experience on, on a field trip, they will actually go in and talk about it, and it will be archived in their, in their portal, so.
I think that's going to be really key. I'm, I'm going through the process with my daughter, and she's like, what did I do in ninth grade? What are all the things I, you know, so I'm glad that it will give some, you know, way to indicate what they have done in their history, because it can be overwhelming, you know, trying to work all that out. I do have a question about, yeah, track does that fall? I think about, you know, when someone, you just mentioned some schools have it, and that tracking. So let's say that I do go to Pleasant Valley, or Pleasantville, or, can that fall for the student, like their parent, do you know what I'm saying, like?
That record.
That record.
Or if they went to a school out of state that had Zello.
Yeah, I actually do not know the answer to that, whether we can import their portal that already exists from another district, if they are using Zello. I will ask that question, but it did not come up.
Okay.
I do know that the system is automatic, so if we have a student, I, I really liked this function of it. If, if we have a student who moves in one day, it actually reads off of our system, so that by the next morning, that student will actually have a Zello account.
Okay.
They'll have their own portal set up, because it auto, automatically sets up, so we don't have to manually, we do have some systems where we actually have to manually create an account for them, but this is not one of them.
Okay. I'm curious to know, just because I know there are just so many kids transfer out. I do want to know, does it put students in a box? Does it put it in a, in a box? That's, you know, just, that would be my only concern, you know, you get to be, yeah, tracker, you know what I'm saying? Like, you know, you say I want to be a firefighter when I'm five years old, but I tend to, by 12th grade, I want to be a teacher, totally different, track, no.
Of course not. Yeah, no, definitely not. The, it's not ever going to tell a student what they should do, it's going to give ideas, and those ideas get more specific as the student gets older, and as they get more clear on any, you know, any surveys or any work that they do. It also has a really great, I, I love the concept of doing the, the demo for you. It has a great interface with some of the collegiate work. They can actually, they can actually auto-send their transcripts out of Zello, and it goes in as a secure, legal document. So it's, it's got some really amazing functions, so it's, it's, no, it's really amazing. Now, it'll take us a little while to get it set up, but I just, for the money, I really felt like, and they're giving us, you know, they're giving us a much better deal. For example, at the elementary, you know, typically, they charge by elementary, they're charging us one flat fee for all elementaries for the setup, so we're getting some pretty good deals, because they're very excited about the work that we're doing. They've assured us that we're farther along in the career development process than many other districts, and so they were, we actually, I actually called several people at the State Department and asked them if they wanted to sit in on some of our demos and listen to our staff talk about it and see it, and so they actually had about 10 people who joined in, including Linda Fandel, who is the, used to be the governor's special assistant on education, but is now in charge of the work, the Future Ready Iowa. She sat in on the entire thing, so, as did about nine of her colleagues. So they're walking along this, they, they said, well, we heard Zello, but we thought it was like the rest, and so I said, it is not like the rest, so.
Now, as far as training, that, I was wondering about the training, as far as who's trained, like, we're paying to train, and then, how does that keep going, and is there updates yearly, and that type of thing?
There are, it, I could go into all the details. I will tell you, I was very impressed with the, the training piece of it. They actually do start with a Leadership Steering Committee cadre, which we will actually be starting in December already. So they're training 10 people. I asked if I could sit in on the 11th, because I didn't want to tie up one of the slots, and they are going to let me sit in on it, just because I want to, you know, obviously see what's going on, but, and then it's kind of the scaffolding, it just kind of filters down. There's some electronic or, or modules, yeah, online modules that the teachers can take, and we've got a pretty good system. We've actually, Jody's in the back, she can tell you that we talked a little bit about it at the last meeting, and I just kind of rolled out some of the ways that we could do that, where you give teachers some, you know, some time and some wiggle room, like, you know, how about a flexible schedule? Like, if you could do it sometime between February 1st and April 1st, and this is how it could play out, and I think, Jody's nodding her head, I think they were pretty, they, they thought that was a really great way to, to roll some of that out. There'd be some live, but some of that foundational stuff will be done in a, kind of a unique way, so.
So this documents interest and experiences?
It documents about 20 different things. So I, I kind of got excited about the elementary interest inventory, so that's just one piece of it. It documents some of their schedules, it will document a high school interest, it will, it, there's, there's so much in it. It does, service learning, experience, it, it really is a child's K-12 experience, all logged into one system. With addition of some software where they actually get to try out some, you know, educational things. So I will let, let's demo it for you, I, I think you will be as impressed as the eighty to ninety people were every time I saw it.
Does it like give weight to, I'm sorry, go ahead. Does it give weight to where their aptitude tends to show, like, will that, does that play into it?
Yeah, it can, but really, it's, it's not intended to pigeonhole, they could, you know, they may ask them questions, they may say, you know, there may be a section where they self-report, like, what's your grade in math right now? What's your grade, I mean, there are some, some software systems that do that. But just because a kid gets a B in math doesn't mean that they couldn't be, you know, anything they want. And so that kind of goes back to India's question, they, they really do help kids think about things, but it's pretty student-driven. The teachers are not gonna be telling the students what to do, nor will the, you know, the students will, you know, they may graduate and do something completely different. But at least they will have opportunities to really think about it and it will be documented instead of their fifth grade teacher saying, what do you wanna be? And they do a picture and they put it up on the wall and then they send it home with the parents and then it's never, you know, we're never track.
I guess I was just thinking, like, you know, sometimes there's things that you, you are good at and you don't realize what jobs there are.
Absolutely, yeah.
So it's not an assessment tool?
There's some assessment pieces in it, no, it's not, I mean, an assessment of, it, it helps them, no, it's not an assessment of aptitude. But it may help them think through, you know, a variety of things. It could be goal-setting, it could be some, I already mentioned the interest inventories, which that is a form of an assessment. Because they're trying to help the kids assess like where their values and what, what makes them happy and interests, aptitudes, attitudes. So that, you know, if that's how you're using assessment, but it's not an assessment system like what Edify would be.
But it, it documents what courses have been taken?
Yes, because it interfaces with Infinite Campus.
Okay.
The only thing it doesn't do so far is that we will still need to do credit audits. So it will, it can track like four years of math and whatever, but it may, you know, if there's a particular class a student hasn't taken, that really comes out of Infinite Campus. So we're still working with them on that piece, but it's more of a scheduler, it's a planner, schedule planner, not the scheduler itself.
I was wondering if, you know, if we, if our courses at the Career Center in particular, which aren't designed to necessarily align with Carnegie units, but there's elements of those. I'm just wondering if it documents that, yeah, you've got these elements of algebra. And therefore, after taking these courses and looking at the results, whether or not you could end up with a Carnegie unit for a class you didn't take.
This system does not do that, but we do that. So, you know, we'll look at, we do have a couple of classes where they get an applied geometry class because there's so much geometry and all of the standards are met for geometry. So the construction class is a good example of that, we do that. We make that determination.
Is there, just quickly, just a language, Spanish, Bosnia, do they have language options?
It is fully convertible right now at the present time to Spanish, so far. You can, you can interface it with some of the other translate, translator things, but right now Spanish is embedded, so it's a toggle switch on it.
And what about, I see in the contract, it says clear annual pricing for new services. So it, did we just like get a deal to do this two-year contract or two and a half or three?
Yeah, this is three.
Well, yeah, except like for elementary, it's just two, because that doesn't start until.
They're starting it in July, but we will be setting up student portals this spring. But they're not gonna charge us until starting in July. So we just put off some of the actual student usage of it until July so that we didn't have to pay for that module. But we'll still have access to setting up all of their accounts and doing the training for elementary teachers.
Okay, but so is it annual fee or?
It is an annual fee after that. And so right now, after all of this is said and done, for all of the training of new people and the accounts for every single child, I believe it's around forty thousand dollars a year. So is the sustainable, am I right, Michael, it's around forty, forty-three? Yeah, thirty-eight, five plus four.
And that's gonna be something that they're, are we gonna be able to depend that that's going to be pretty average then past our contract or?
Yeah, I mean, it should be, there's no way to know what the, you know, what the increase would be, I don't, you know.
But once you're locked in, you're kinda at their mercy in a way.
Right, for sure.
So is this a standalone company, a for-profit standalone company?
It is a for-profit company, it's a vendor.
But it's, it isn't part of a, another company, it's its own?
It's on the state's approved list, I believe there's ten software systems that are actually approved to meet the legislation. It does, yeah, it interfaces with it. That was one of the, that's why we had Matt and his team on the. Yeah, the training was, the trainer, our trainer was a man out of Toronto, that's who we've had, well, he wasn't doing training, he was doing the demos, but.
Well, I just talked to Pam and I said, we're setting up a board demo, so look, look for that coming into your mailbox, so.
Right, we'd love that.
All right, so all those in favor of approving the contract with Zello, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us them to item F and the recommended motion here. This is regarding the substitute clerical and food service staff compensation increase. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the proposed pay increase for substitute clerical and food service staff as outlined.
So move.
Thank you, India, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stacy. And discussion, I know Mr. Botchway is here tonight to talk, anything that people have questions about.
Quick amendment.
Yes.
It's just that it be retroactive to ten sixteen, if approved by the board. So if you decide to vote, it be retroactive to ten sixteen, it just aligns with our pay period in a way that you wanna go back a couple of days if the board approves.
And this was not, that's not in the recommendation, but you're wanting me to add ten sixteen. So who, let's see, who moved that? India, would you accept a friendly amendment to add the date of ten sixteen, twenty twenty-one?
I'm in the recommendation to ten sixteen.
Thank you, yes, and Sue, are you, or Stacy, sorry, are you in, I wrote S, that doesn't help, okay, thank you both. All right, and questions?
Great question, so we looked at a couple of different things. One, you know, we went through a list of about fifteen different districts to see what they paid. It was, we focused most on our urban districts and obviously, you know, Cedar Falls as well. But we put information out to them to find out, okay, where is everybody out in relation to, you know, their sub pay? And so I wanna make sure that's clear, we're talking about our subs. Because I think what the board had shared with me the last time we met around our substitute teachers is that we've done a lot of different things for our substitute teachers throughout the years. We hadn't done anything with our substitute para and our food service staff. And so when you see sub clerical, we're talking about our para and clerk typist, our sub para and clerk typist, that's just the designation that they're, they're called under. And we also made a note of our building secretaries, we've recently just had some absences where we wanted to pay attention to, not only here at the ESC, but also in our buildings. When there are building secretaries absent, they actually do a tremendous amount of work for the building that we wanna make sure that they get subs for as well. And so we're building a program and that will help with this. And so that's where we got some of the information. And then the other information was just shared with the, we had to look at where we currently pay our, our staff as well. We don't wanna be too close because, for example, if you look at food service, they were moving that to twelve dollars, our food service staff make around thirteen or fourteen dollars an hour. And if we had it to, or fifteen dollars, and if we had it too close, then why would you then choose to, you know, be gainfully employed with part of those schools? And so we, we, we tried to balance that to come up with a number that everybody could agree on and move forward.
But regular employees, do they get benefits that the, that the subs don't?
Yes, correct, if they're full-time employees, they may get benefits that the subs don't.
So that differential is actually greater than the base amount?
Which differential?
The, you know, say they're getting fourteen and this is twelve, but they also get benefits, right?
That's correct, that's correct, they get additional, they get additional benefits on top of that as well. The only problem is with our food service employees, typically many of those individuals, the majority of those individuals are only working about three to four hours a day. And so that's where, you know, you wouldn't see that same amount, that same leap.
So even the regular, the regular staff does not get?
Correct, no.
Benefits because they don't, how many hours do you need to work?
Typically, it's about three to four hours, I mean, we have some food service staff that work six hours, but for the most part, the majority of our food service staff work about three to four hours.
What, what number is required to get benefits?
Have to be over about thirty-five hours a week. Yep.
Yeah, we don't have our mics on, do we? Yeah, gotcha, okay, Sue, anybody else, turn your mics on, thank you. So this is just clerical, it's not, you're not talking other paras, you're talking clerical and food service, right?
So, so clerical, just to be clear, clerical is a designation for what we call WSP employees. And this, I'm gonna put this on record, Lorraine and I went back and forth on this and I said, you need to put paras on there because it can be confusing. But we were talking about our para educator, our sub para educators, our sub clerk typist and our sub food service. So that's the, it made it confusing because that's how we talk about it and it's not necessarily how everybody else may think about it.
So, do we have difficulty getting subs?
Yes, absolutely, I mean, we have difficulty right now filling some of our positions of our support staff and we definitely have an issue with subs. Part of us came up with food service in particular, since my tenure, we have not increased the amount of food service pay, they've been at nine dollars. And if you look at some of the, you know, Quick Star, some of the other places, they pay significantly more. Now, the change with our food services, typically they use their, their, their sub pool to then pick from who will then get hired for jobs. That's just a different, that's a different process with our AFSMI group than it is for the rest of our employee groups, even our admin support and admin. And so with that, they have to have a really big sub pool and right now, they do not. They have about, maybe at the time we talked, it was two to three subs. And that's not enough when you have people sick, people absences for whatever reason, so they're trying to do what they can to get more people out there.
I think this is certainly a step in the right direction, but I think we need to keep our eye on not only the subs, but the regular pay as well. Because we really do need the staff and we can't control the market, but the market is, but we have to react to it. And sometimes it, you know, it's in between contracts, but we just need to do it.
We are working on some things, you know, again, not to share too much information here at the board table. But, you know, Dr. Lindeman and I just briefly talked yesterday, not briefly talked, for some time, talked last week around setting up some opportunities for us to go to the different buildings and hear from our para educators. We reached out to them, we had a value meeting at our last professional development that I spoke to them just about. Value, just about, you know, we care about you, we value you and we, we did breakfast for, a social breakfast for thirty minutes, was the first time that happened and they were very supportive of that. Then I had a conversation with them just about, you know, here's some, here's some information that, you know, we know that you may feel this way or whatever the case may be. But here are some of the things that we're trying to do to not only put dollars in your pocket, but, you know, ultimately try to grow you as professionals. And so that was the rest of the presentation, but we did hear from them some concerns about how they're feeling and, you know, how they were being treated in general. And so took those concerns back to Dr. Lindeman and one of the things we thought about was to go, again, go out and just listen more at different buildings, random buildings. Just because there's some people that, you know, are always quick to talk and engage and there's some people that don't talk at all, that we wanna get a wide, a wide range of that conversation to, to talk about how we need to move forward. And so we're, it's tough because, you know, you wish you could snap your finger, but there's so many different things that you have to consider when you're talking about looking at pay or looking at other things. But we are looking at it and that's a conversation I had with them and obviously I'm to the public tonight.
And I know this might be more work for you.
Yeah, go ahead, go after you.
But I, I was wondering if we could eventually get like the current salary for paras, the current salary for para subs, the current salary for clerical, clerical subs. If we, bus drivers, you know, all that, because I, I do worry more and more with the job market being tighter and tighter. And, you know, we wanna get the best candidates to work with our kids and, you know, that's, I, I just would appreciate seeing that. Because I know a lot of places you can go and get a job for, you know, fifteen dollars an hour and you don't have to deal with any kids or any, you know what I mean? Right, yeah.
Well, no, I can get, definitely get to that information, I can probably put it either on this weekly update or the next. I mean, I, I'll put in some additional notes in consideration because you're right, some of the important points are, you may not have to deal with some of the, you know, the intricacies and, you know, thing, fun things that come with kids. On the flip side, you don't have to deal with potentially have to work in on holidays or having to work later hours and things along those lines, but I can, I can add that to that.
But I just think that if any way we can support our, our lower-end salaries because they're extremely important too, so.
Sure, just my, you made a point about the district going to talk to the paras, which is great. I'm just wondering if that same energy is going to the administrators in the building, talking to them because the paras don't see the district leaders all the time, but they'll see their administrator staff. And so I do find that just as important because they may not talk or say anything to you, but they'll definitely may say something in regards to their administrator staff that they're ending up. So what kind of conversations are you having with the?
Absolutely, we talked about it initially in relation to, or just a general valuation conversation to say, you know, some of our para educators just wanna see you once throughout the year. And I know it gets busy, I get it even being here, I'm not even around kids where you're like, oh my gosh, one more meeting during the day and you have to do it, family stuff and everything else. We're trying to set up times and one of the other things that we're working with, as you know, that, you know, really wanna work with our union and everything, working on WSP to have. With WEA, we wanted to, we have monthly meetings that are supposed to be meeting with their building reps, before our teachers are supposed to be with their teacher reps. We're trying to set up the same structure for WSP as well. So we're trying to build a structure and again, I, as you know, I always try to build a structure, so if I remove myself from it, it still works and, and, and it's sustainable to that extent. And that's what we're trying to do. And so instead of me hearing each and every concern that may come from our employees, it's important to hear it. But as you're right, it comes from the building level, needs to come to the building level especially first, using your union representation to, you know, talk about some of those issues initially. Handle it maybe at the building level, so it may not even come to my office to that extent. So we're working on that, we haven't fleshed that out, that's, I would say it's a couple of months away. I can provide an update later on in regards to where we're at in that process. But we're, we're pretty excited about, you know, again, reaffirming that process for our WEA, but also doing more with that with our WSP. But it's, it's gonna take some work, we, we're, we're working on it across the board because communication is important. And we wanna make sure it's not just at the district level that we're having these, these good conversations and relationships.
And my last question was, I know that we talked about the para and the clerical, what about janitors, are they on a different?
Custodial staff.
Yeah, custodial staff, yeah, they're just on a different pay increase. We increased them, I believe it was a year and a half ago or maybe two years ago. And with that, we did a step, we did a, we did two steps. And so we said, at this point, we're gonna do this step and then we're gonna do another step. And so at this point, we're in a good place.
Also with the subs too?
With the subs, yeah, it was for the subs that we did that. And so at this point, we're in a good place, but again, we're, kind of what Lyle said, we're consistently looking at it. Again, and again, I'll stop after this, you know, we want to obviously be aware of and cognizant of the challenges that many of our, the community is facing. And many people in our community are facing in relation to, you know, the worker shortage and things along those lines. But we also wanna be cognizant of not acting too quickly and over-promising and under-delivering. And so while it may seem slow, we also are in conversation with these industries that, you know, when they throw out big dollars or signing bonuses, we also know that that may not only be for a week or to get them through the Christmas timeframe, that may not necessarily be for the whole year. And we just have a longer, a longer timeframe that we have to consider because we wanna make sure we're doing it sustainable.
Thank you. All right, so all those in favor then of approving the substitute clerical and food service compensation increase, please signify by saying aye. And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes the action items in our agenda tonight, and so I will turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, I actually have several, so. First of all, I would just, I know that last Saturday, no, just this Saturday, I think was the all-state tryouts for students. And we actually had four students who made the all-state designation and then we had one who made it as an alternate. And so I just, I thought I would just say their names, so they're just, I mean, it is a big deal. I actually had one of my own kids who was going to try out and tried and tried and practiced and practiced and just ran out of time to get, really get ready. And so I know it is a big deal. So I really wanna congratulate these people. So Zach Clark from East made it on his bass trombone, so that is awesome. Abby Wendlin from West made it, made all-state on her flute. Emma Riordan, I think, on, yeah, on clarinet, also West High. And then Andrew Congdon on French horn from West. And then we had another East student, Olivia Sinclair, who made alternate on her cello. And her proud mama is actually sitting out there in the crowd and so we will just, we'll just congratulate. And so, um, we will just, um, we'll just congratulate all five of them. I think that is, it is such a big deal, and for, I look around and so many of us are kind of band. Band nerd moms, so I am a proud band nerd mom. I love, 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 love band. And so, um, anyway, huge, huge congrats to them. I know how long they must have practiced, um, to get ready for that. And, and, um, also some really amazing natural talent, talent, so congratulations to them. Last night was, uh, really an amazing event. Um, we celebrated, it was a Dan Gable celebration event, and it was a seventy-two, seventy-two. So he seven, it was his birthday, seventy-two. And then, um, also he was the, uh, gold medalist Olympian in, um, nineteen seventy-two. So it was a seventy-two slash seventy-two, and also freedom of medal, or a, a medal of freedom, um, winner, presidential medal of freedom. And so it was just a really nice, it, I, I think Kingsley was there, um, Stephanie was there, Jeff Frost was there. It was, it was quite a large crowd. I, what would you say were there, three hundred, two, two, three hundred people? So, um, but it, what was really, really, really amazing was just really all of the Olympic medalists who were there, um, the national champions. It was the who's who of wrestling. And so, um, it was, it was really an amazing event. And, and, um, just listening to all of the people talk about Dan Gable from the time he was, you know, young, and all the way up to, you know, college and then coaching and, um, the Olympic, it was, it was a very well-done. Uh, Jim Miller, I think, was a, spearheaded a lot of it from the Waterloo side. It was actually sponsored by the National Hall of Fame, Wrestling Hall of Fame. So, uh, they, people flew in from all over, so it was, it was really a, a great event. So, um, was glad that our district had the opportunity to be part of that. Third thing, I just want to thank, I know with the elections coming up very soon, I just want to thank all of the people who are running for, um, school board. We have a couple of our, um, school board members who are running for reelection, and we have, um, two other people who are running for the third school board seat. And then I, I, there's just so many other elections. I had the opportunity at Rotary today to hear the mayoral, um, forum, which was just a great opportunity. And I think next week, we get to hear all of the other candidates who are running for city council, but there's eight. And I just, I kept thinking while I'm listening, you know, while I was listening to people, it is, it really takes, uh, strength and, uh, fearless courage to run for, uh, an election, for run for a, an elected seat. And so I just, I just wanted to give a shout out to every single person who threw their hat in the ring. Um, it's, it's a big deal to, to say, hey, I'll sign up for some, um, you know, for some extra work and perhaps some angry parents and, and, you know, or angry stakeholders or, you know, and a pandemic or two. It just, you know, and, and I keep thinking that, you know, so many of those positions are not paid positions, and if they are, they're not paid very much, and, you know, school board is not paid at all. And I just, I just really wanted to thank, um, you know, thank everybody for who opted to, to sign up to support and, and live a life of service, so thank you to them. Comment about, um, COVID, so we are still working our way through, um, you know, for the stakeholders, I would say that, you know, we are, who are listening to this, you know, I think we've found some kind of a rhythm. Um, I would definitely thank Kingsley and his team for really taking, and, and Marla Page and her team to, for really working through the, the COVID numbers. We are really monitoring very closely, and if there's any inkling that there's a concern, we are, you know, moving right into a mask mandate for buildings as that happens. We happen to have two buildings that are, um, two elementaries, or, um, early childhood, and then, uh, one elementary who are doing masks this week, and we're watching very, very closely. Um, our numbers were, our threshold was set low, and we knew that, but, um, we just really wanted to keep a, keep a handle on that. And so we are watching that very closely, and, um, just wanted to, I guess, assure the public on that.
How have those gone though? Like, has it been pretty smooth?
Yeah, I think it's been very smooth. Um, you know, we, we have a, we have a pretty good process now. We really track the numbers on, on Friday morning, and we're looking at those, um, before we make any determinations. We call out to the buildings, we confirm the numbers, we discuss the students, how are we doing? And so really a, a, a solid conversation, and then we put the, we notify the principals, and then we notify the staff, and we notify the parents. And so I, I have actually not received a single phone call, um, or, or communication from parents. And that's not always the, you know, I'm not saying that that's a, a good thing, but it is, it is an indicator of whether, you know, what people are thinking. And so, um, it, it appears to be working pretty well, um, so far. So we're monitoring that very closely, and will that be the model for the rest of the year? I, I don't know, because we, you know, we're really, we stand ready to flex, and we stand ready to spring into action, one way or the other, should we need to do that. And we, we put that in our community, our original communications. And so, uh, we stand behind that. I mean, we're monitoring that, we continue to talk with people. And so I, I would say, I would say it's going pretty well. Now, pretty well does not mean that we have pleased everyone, um, and we know that. And, but we didn't please everybody before that either, so, um, you know, we're just monitoring that very, very closely. And then.
How are parents notified? Do you do calls?
Yeah, we, we use our system, yep, calls, emails, texts, yep, the whole, the whole shebang. And that usually happens, we've, we've kind of settled into a one-thirty deal, um, about one-thirty every day. And so, or, um, every Friday, one, one-thirty every Friday. And so isn't that, isn't it at one-thirty that the parent phone call? And I think the staff one goes out around noon. Okay, so we kind of, we have a little process that we use. And so we use the morning to really hone into it and really double-check every single number and, and talking with principals, so. So far, so good on that. Um, final comment is just to our Lowell, I would just, you know, to our Lowell families, and for everybody else who loves our Lowell students and families, um, which is all of us. We have been working very hard behind the scenes to really get ready for the, the Lowell move. We have a group that comes together, um, every other, well, right now, we're going to every other week. Um, we were meeting once a month, but now this, this month, we moved to every other week, and then we'll go to every week, um, to make sure that we are ready. It, it's going extremely well. Kudos to Carrie Heinzlerling, the principal Lowell, and her team, who are really leading it from the other side. We feel very, very ready. I feel like we've, um, you know, we're even discussing signage and when a sign goes up, and we're notifying, um, you know, looking at the address and making sure that we're, we're really ready for what's happening. There will be two open houses coming up. Um, the first one will be, um, and I probably shouldn't say the date, because the minute I do, it's only for parents. So if you are a parent of a Lowell student, it's only for the parents. So if I put the date out, then everybody will say, could we just come to that one? It really truly is for the students to show their parents around. They, they've earned that. So that one actually will be that very first week. And then, um, Andrew, we may let you sneak in too. So, um, we'll, we'll do, yes, no, we'll do something just to let people in. And then we are gonna do a bigger open house. That date has not completely been set, but I believe the public could assume that it's probably gonna be right around that first of March. Um, we usually, we usually let our families, our kids move in, and then, you know, there will be a punch list, um, that we'll want to get through, punch list, just meaning there's just a few bells and whistles. We'll notice that there, you know, this didn't get painted quite right or whatever. And so we'll let the, the, you know, let the contractors do that. We really want our public to be able to see it in a fairly final state. So, uh, it's, it's looking amazing. I'm really, really excited for that. So, um, I guess that's, that's all I would say on that. We're, we will be ready. I promise we will be ready. So, thank you.
Okay, information from board members. I'll start down here to my left with Ms. India.
Okay, I have a question and a comment. So, um, I did text Kingsley in regards to, um, the process with parents when it comes to the conversation of them getting sick. So, you know, we're in allergy season, you know, and parents, you know, though they haven't called, I've had a few parents who are like the two-week thing. So just walk us through, especially the building level, because I know it's not the same at each building, or, and maybe it is. But, you know, just explain to parents, when they get that phone call, it's like, they have allergies, but you still have to do the two-week, or they have to get a clear test. Just, what's, what's the process?
Yeah, we can send out some additional clarification. I talked to Marla right before this meeting as well. Um, but, you know, basically, and I don't mean to make it sound simple, because, you know, there's a lot of documentation and, um, and a lot of work that goes into this. But, you know, when you have anybody that presents with one of the high-risk symptoms or two of the low-risk symptoms, that really starts or indicates for the nurse that this individual needs to be sent home. And so with that, we then, you know, you have a couple of different options at your disposal. The first that people may feel comfortable with is going to your physician and getting alternative diagnosis. And that can be faxed to us, that can be emailed to us, that can be handed to the, to us, and basically says, hey, it's this, and not COVID. Um, the second way that I think, you know, maybe we can do some more communication around is, you know, we're taking any COVID test at this moment. And so there's COVID test availability at Walgreens, Walmart, um, everywhere in that sense that if you come back with one of those rapid tests that, you know, you can get back in minutes, uh, if it comes back negative, you are able to come to school. And that's something that, again, we want to share just, uh, more publicly and make sure that information is out there, because that's something that's just changed recently in regards to what are we taking as far as information, or what will be taking as far as verification of, um, negative COVID test. Uh, one of the last things I'll mention that we are still just testing out, and just want to roll out to families just yet, um, but Blackhawk County, I was gonna say Waterloo County, Blackhawk County is one of the few places, um, in the state that, um, we receive, um, test kits, actually a number of test kits in my office, um, that we have started with staff to utilize, and it's gone well, um, and it's supposed to provide, um, again, that rapid response. And so it's a little bit more, I would say, on the reliable side than just getting a test kit from Walmart. Um, but with that ri- reliability, uh, we would give, um, test kits to parents that, you know, would request them. We haven't, we're working on building the system. Our hope is that we would send it out next week, um, to families. And they would either pick it up from the school or from the ESC, and then they could take that information. If they get it in by one o'clock to the people's clinic, um, they could then, um, that, they charter a, a car or whatever the case may be to get it directly to, um, the testing site, and they can get their response back in twenty-four hours. And so again, you have a couple of different opportunities. One will happen in the next couple of weeks, but right now, you can still just get a test from Walgreens and some other places that, again, have a higher reliability, um, to move that conversation forward.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, because, uh, again, if a student has chronic allergies and they just have a note from their physician, that is acceptable to be brought back to the school and say, listen, this is what it is, we know, we are very aware, we're monitoring on their end.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the trying thing that I would say, and Dr. Lindeman's been a part of those conversations as well, is that with allergies or flu season that's happening, our, our, our pediatrics and our clinics and our family, um, clinics are getting slammed, um, with those requests. And so we're trying to be cognizant of that and, and, you know, open it up to, you know, make sure that we can keep our students safe or keep our staff and schools safe, but still allow for people to have multiple ways by which they can show verification that they don't have COVID. And so with that, that's why we have that option, not only for the alternative diagnosis, but to use, um, you know, any, um, any of the over-the-counter COVID testing that has come out. And that's been something that Blackhawk County has confirmed is a viable method as well.
Okay, I appreciate that, letting the public know. Um, my last comment was just, um, I just want to acknowledge the family, the men and women who are standing on the picket lines right now. Uh, I just want to know, let them know that they're definitely my prayer, that stay, staying in solitary, uh, in regards to what they need, what they want. And, um, I know it's, it's tough right now, but I just want to make sure they know that I'm thinking about them each and every day, those families. So just want to say that.
Okay, Sue?
Good to see you.
Yes, um, no, that's okay. Um, I also just, um, wanted to piggyback on what Dr. Lindeman said as far as, um, we all have the wonderful opportunity, um, well, are most everyone in this room to vote. And if you are able to vote, um, even high school seniors, I would, um, just, um, exercise that right to get out and vote, because, um, it's very important in our, our, um, system here in the United States, and that's a way that your voice can be heard, maybe not always in the, the realm that you want, but your voice is being heard. So I would encourage that. And then also, I, with India saying that, I didn't know if, um, you know, if the strike would continue potentially, you know, if we can identify some families, you know, within our buildings with, um, dear parents, one or two, or single dear income, or something that we could, um, maybe if it does continue, God forbid, I hope it doesn't, but, um, through Thanksgiving, you know, just, uh, the district maybe doing something within our family support workers to help some of those, um, families, so. That's it.
Thanks, Sue. Stacy?
Well, as I said, there's an election. But it's, so November second, um, polls are open, seven AM to eight. Um, districts one and four for the school board are open, which should be Astor and India. And then there are two people running for Shanley, who decided she's leaving, for Shanley's spot, so, um.
She said Indian and Astor.
I, I said it really fast.
One to four, Indian and Astor.
I do. Until I ran, I did not understand the importance of, of sitting in the seat. I didn't understand the weight that goes with it. And, um, the people who are choosing to run for these positions, if you want to take the time to get to know them and vote for them, it will be well worth it, because we listen to your voice. We are your voice. So if you don't vote, um, you know, with the person you want, then you may not be able to get the message across that you want to get across. Also, um, I wanted to say that, uh, conferences went wonderfully. And, uh, to thank the district for still allowing us to do virtual, um, when you have kids in high school and you're doing seven classes, you know, it's sweet to just, two fifteen, two, so around the clock. Um, that was great, so, uh, another successful conference season. Thank you.
Lyle?
Yeah, I just have a, a inquiry in terms of, do we anticipate our health center dispensing the five to eleven-year-old vaccines?
I don't know if our employee health center would do that, but we are working on, we just received communication today about, uh, potential, uh, emergency use. And so we are looking at what kind of clinics we can provide, either within our schools or at a subsequent location, um, to, for our five to eleven students.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to say a quick bit out to our public about the search for the next superintendent here in the Waterloo schools. So the board has been hard at work meeting. Um, we have hired a search firm called Grunmeyer Leadership Services. Um, they will be helping us just with the process, you know, getting, getting, uh, applications and all of that. But the next thing that I really want to implore our public, we talk about voting, uh, we also are gathering input, and we will have a survey ready probably tomorrow. It'll be up on our website. It will be sent to our staff and our students and our parents and our alumni and our community um, as we look to, uh, gain input on what characteristics and what things are important as we look for the new, next superintendent. Um, so I would just encourage anyone to take that, to share the link with people. We really are wanting as much feedback as we can gather. Um, and then we're gonna move on into some focus groups, uh, at the end, probably, uh, tentatively that week of, uh, November eighth. And after that, uh, hope to have the job up, the application, um, up by the weekend before Thanksgiving, or sometime around that time. And that will be open through the beginning of the year. And then after that application closes, uh, portal closes, then there will be more work that the board does. We'll be doing, um, interview teams and all of that. So if you're interested, if you want to be involved, you can certainly reach out to me, you can reach out to Pam Arndorfer. Um, our, our email addresses are on the website. Um, but we really are interested in gathering as much information as we can going forward. So I just would urge everybody to take that survey when it comes, so. And the next time this board will meet will be November eighth after the election, so. Um, and then if there's nothing further to come before the board tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Sue, thank you, India. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, good night and be well. Six ten.